Please rise as the pledge allegiance be led by Anna Stanko.
Let us lead this to the pride of the United States of America. Public, thanks, with one nation, one. In it, full to the liberty of the rest of our all.
Welcome to the final, we believe, board meeting for the Village of Boston Spa for October 2024. Let us go two minutes and can I get a motion that the minutes of the October 7th, 2024 meeting be approved? Trustee Fundesa, trustee Raymond, discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the October 15th, 2024 meeting be approved? Trustee Fundesa, trustee Price Bush, discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We have a presentation tonight from our treasurer Melissa McCann as we investigate going to a new payroll service. So let's have Melissa join us. We'll have a slideshow join in as well. And can I, Cameron, Melissa?
So I just wanted to give the board of trustees an update in regards to our payroll service that we've been using for about two years. We've been using ADP Run. I don't remember if you remember me talking about it before, but we have done ADP Run with the support of our accounting system, our accountants, LGSS, which is the old EFR. In March of 2023, LGSS had a switch to ADP Run from ADP Workforce. The switch has been difficult because ADP Run does not really have the capacity to handle our size of payroll. Run is kind of designed to handle a smaller office without any anomalies like we have. And we struggle every, just about every week, we have an employee either call us or come in and say something's not right with their time. Most of it's usually the police department. And two, LGSS gave us our fiscal year 2025 contract and it states that though only do our payroll processing until December 31st of 2024. So I started hitting the ground, looking at different payroll systems that would be a potential match for our needs. After a few months of meeting with several companies and the recommendations of LGSS, they gave us the idea to contact Complete Payroll. They are located in New York and they work directly with municipalities. So I went through two of the references that they gave us. One was the town of Seneca Falls. And the other was, I think it was the village of Tennessee. And they said that they really do, you know, like it. They say it's very simple to use and they have great customer support. So if you go to this first slide, is that the first you got? And payroll country, do you want me to wait?
Go ahead.
People come first. Manners aren't optional. This is like their motto. And a job isn't done until it is. Sure, we're headquartered in a small rural town or headquartered in Paris, New York, which is, I think, south of Rochester, maybe near Letchworth. I'm not really sure. But payroll country isn't just where we're from. It's our philosophy on how business should be conducted. So they have a single point of contact. I'll just go over some of the ideas on their slide. They have a dedicated Complete Payroll representative that's assigned to our municipality. And we can contact them directly right and get them on the phone. Whereas when we call ADP right now, they have to go through hoops and ladders. What's your password? What's your EIN number? What's your this? And then when we finally get somebody to open up our account, they say, oh, you have to contact LGSS because they're the middleman and they will help you with your question. So that's been very frustrating. Complete Payroll will offer free software training. We'll have training anytime we need it. If there's something we're not clear with or we need it for a certain employee, they'll be able to help us with that. Free customer reports. It's our data. They store it indefinitely. When we switched to ADP Run, for me to get information from the ADP that we had before, our records were archived, which I don't know really what that meant, but it was quite a hassle to get to that information. They had to, I imagine it was in a room up on top. I don't know where it was, but they couldn't, they had to call me back and it was a pain. Modern software, up to date, accurate, easy payroll transition. Their teams will transition us from ADP to Complete Payroll. Competitive pricing. We will be saving money in the end, getting the program that we need.
Say no more, right?
Locally owned and operated, again, someone who's dedicated in New York State, which is rare to find a company that you're going to actually talk to somebody in New York and not like in Florida or another country. Industry-specific knowledge. They serve over 40 different government entities as clients. And so, and the other thing is, is they are gold certified with New York State Retirement, which is going to be a huge plus for us. So the second slide. Partnership begins with onboarding, project initiation, forms are handed over to the implement, they have like an implementation team and they'll reach out to us to establish our high line, high level timelines. And then we have the dedicated representative. Product configuration. In our presentation with Complete Payroll, we were able to explain some of the details that we needed and how we needed our payroll to operate. Currently, ADP Run does not have the capability to track any of our compensatory time earned by our employees in regard mainly to the police department. We're pretty much, we're tracking their bank hours and their hours that they want to get paid out for on an Excel spreadsheet. So, which is a step above the path of paper, but Complete Payroll, their iSolve system will be able to handle this for us, making payroll processing a lot more efficient. Implementation phase will be scheduled to do a test payroll run to check to see that tracking is all, is working the way that we need it to. And then the account was turned live and with our customer service rep aiding us in the process, they will schedule stabilization meetings to assure that it's functioning as needed as time goes on. And then the third slide is about the New York State Retirement. The village is in the process of transitioning from legacy to enhanced reporting. And Complete Payroll is going to be able to help us with that because they're trained on how to upload all that information. And they'll be able to do our monthly reporting, which is a huge plus. Other pluses, customized timekeeping, including shift differentials for police as well as their comp time and overtime earned. System can also, we can also like customize it to keep track of like uniform allowance. Any meal tickets that employees might have earned that can all get paid out through payroll. Open enrollment of health insurance. Since we're transitioning from Anthem, Blue Cross to Teamsters Health Insurance, we won't be doing the open enrollment through payroll this year, but next year we should be able to. And people, employees will be able to access that right on their Complete Payroll app, either on their cell phones or a personal computer or the kiosk at their work location. Employees will punch in very similarly to the way that they are right now. With the exception of once, once they get into the system, they'll be able to see their accrual time and like request vacations and other things that I'm not really familiar with yet. The summary of the cost, this is the bottom line, right? The service through Complete Payroll is approximately $12,764 a year or a little more than $1,064 per month. They will bill us weekly at a cost of approximately $245 a week. And then at the end of the year, there'll be a small cost for W2 processing. That's a minimal cost. The cost of LGSS processing our payroll from September to December this year calculates to about $1,200 a month. And we also have an ADP monthly charge that comes out of our checking account of like $350 a month, which is like $4,000 a year. So this will be a big savings for the village and provide us a lot less hassle with employees, more customization in the long term. So it's a really good move.
For those wondering the importance of this, the village actually is such a larger payroll in terms of number of employees. I believe either town comprises our parts because of the police, DBW, some components of fire, pool, lifeguards, library, et cetera. So it's actually more of a daunting situation than you realize when you have a payroll company that's not doing everything you need for us. And so that's why we wanted to find something a little bit better after kind of the ADP Run nightmare. When we were told essentially, well, after further review, ADP Run wasn't really for you guys in terms of the size of your payroll. So here we are and we did our own research this time and you can see Melissa, I got well versed on it. And if anybody has any questions, please speak now on the board forever, please. So when, was it two years ago when we were choosing accountants and they insisted on ADP payroll, but now they're okay?
Yeah, they're kind of backpedaling on that and saying that, well, at least for our village, it's not working. And I mean, they, as far as like employees know, their time off, their bank vacation and such, actually just took that right off of the pay stuffs because it was never accurate. Because ADP couldn't keep up with the way that we did our payroll.
Their accounts have no problem switching over.
No, they, they told us in the contract, they said, you're not doing payroll through ADP anymore for you guys. So, which is good. I mean, I'm, I'm, it's kind of a, it's, it's a good thing, I think.
Thanks for doing that homework and get us to a better place.
Yeah, sure.
It was a lucky relationship. Thank you, Melissa. Well, same thing. You want me to highlight on your treasurer's report specifically? I might as well just move to the top while you're around here, but just to say that our reliefs have been done effective for October 31st. Could fluctuate. Somebody pays their taxes in the next couple of days, but obviously around $81,000, $82,000 in adjustments. Heard about payroll. Our audit is continuing with Teal Becker at Chiaromonte and they're back in the office today. The AFR is almost done for fiscal year 2024. We're just reviewing it, making sure it looks accurate from our perspective too. October sales tax is, the receipts counting wide for, I guess the August period that will be, we're down a bit 16%, I believe that is saying, which is a large amount. Yeah, we, we received already $6,000 less this year than the same period last year. So the bellmount effect might have been more interesting than we realized ultimately in terms of a plus in June, but a minus in August ultimately. Anything else I forgot or you want to say? Otherwise I'll skip that part of the meeting when we get to it. But thank you to Melissa.
I just wanted, we have an estimated date for when the audit of the nation will be done.
Those are two separate questions altogether. Which one would you like first?
The audit.
The audit, they are literally finishing, I think, for a couple of years ago. And then we're going to start them immediately on the next one as well. They, I think they feel because we're not paying their highest rate necessarily that we're kind of the back of the line type scenario, but now that we've got their focus, we're going to try to get two years done basically in short period of time. And then hopefully when 2024's AFR is completely in the books, we can get them to go and get that done. So we're probably catch up right now, but we're on the way of getting back into the right spot again.
Like another month it should be done?
Uh, what'd you say, Melissa?
Well, she just gave me a huge list of stuff to, I mean, Nate's going to be back again this week. So yeah, I would say in a month, probably the audit of 2023 will be done. The AFR, I think is.
Just about done. Yeah. He wants us to look at it for disaccuracy and any concerns that pop up to us as people know the numbers that are coming in. For instance, we had a water number issue last year and we never got that fixed per se. This year, we actually put time into it, make sure we fix the water numbers correctly, got an accurate perspective from.
And you guys will send it to the board when it's?
Yes, absolutely. Okay. Public comment on agenda items only, three minutes for speakers. See some new faces in here. So basically merely have three agenda items here and a one old business item to speak of. So there's not much to talk about in this section. It will be a general public comment session later on in the meeting, so stick around for that. Anybody want to comment on a, an agenda item? Please raise your hand. If you're on Zoom, you want to speak, this is time to raise your hand on Zoom. I see a hand. I see a hand. If you can come up and say.
I can't see my, no, you're fine.
Thank you. Good evening. Mike, I go with you three on the program. Just a question about the minutes for the October 15 meeting. Speaking now because I assume since you voted on, it's okay. The minutes on posted online explain the BOA committee members and listed the names. And mentioned, the minutes mentioned that trustees Raymond and Baskin each had read a statement and that the statement was attached. It's probably just me, but I could not find the statements. So are they the attachments to tonight's meeting?
The attachments that Jen put on the web when she posted the minutes, the attachments, any statements from previous minutes are included in those attachments.
Okay. So Jen, I might need to call you because I couldn't find it today. So thank you.
They should be part of the minutes, right? Are they like the actual PDF or documents?
No, they're part of the attachment.
The attachment. So when you send.
They might be missing. I'm just going through the attachment filing.
When, when they're, I think the motion, the current operator under says that statements will be attached to the minutes.
Right. Online is not the official location for minutes. There's a minutes book. Technically that they would compare it. That is the official collector of minutes. So that I think that's what is intended, but then they put them all in the attachments usually, and I've seen that happen before. So just an oversight for this one. So thank you for raising that.
I mean, yeah, I mean, the intention is for minutes that are on, should be posted online to have the attached to the minutes. But they should be attached, put together. So that the, right after the minutes is the statement that goes, that was said during that meeting, right? So if we're trying to have something that's make it user-friendly, what was sent to me to be with the minutes of that meeting.
Hey, may I also have anything? See no hands here. See no hands on Zoom. Let's move on. No consent agenda tonight. We moved the one I was going to be there into the main motions. It's just going to be as easy to do that. Can I get a motion that A and D are the same, so we'll just move to B purposely. Can I get a motion that the BSBPA be authorized to conduct the annual holiday parade on Friday, December 6th, 2024 from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM? We step off beginning at 5:30 PM. The requested road closures detailed in attachments, proof of, proof of insurance has been provided. Trustee Fundesa. Trustee Price Bush, discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Paying a motion approving the attached agreement between the Village of Boston Spa and Complete Payroll Processing Incorporated to take over payroll services for the village effective January 1st, 2025, with development team work beginning immediately after agreement execution and authorize in the mirror to execute the agreement after village attorney review and any necessary minor revisions deemed necessary by the village attorney to protect the village. Let's, then I will strike everything after the comma and go through and authorize in the mirror, execute the agreement, period. Now, trustee Fundesa, trustee Price Bush, discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the water and sewer hookup request for the Masonic Hall Association of Saratoga County, a 112 Columbia Avenue Extension? I will read the footnote to get close to this. Note, these water and sewer connections will replace existing connections located at the old station building. This approval is contingent on removal of the service connections to the station building and the conditions placed on the usage of the new quote welcome center to which this new water and sewer service will be connected for the approval by the Town of Milton Planning Board. Trustee Fundesa, trustee Baskin, discussion, all in favor? Motion carries. I, did you, you didn't get Jeff's board today, did you? Because he's off. Did he? Okay. I'm not going to steal your thunder, then I will warn you that there's going to be discussion about milling happening at least tomorrow. I want to say on Mechanic Street to Van Buren and the Ford as well, I believe. And I feel like I'm missing one in Maple as well.
Maple, Mechanic and Ford.
So be putting a post out about that, but there were signs put out to the people that live on those streets for them to know what the rules are. And we've gone through this enough times. We all know no overnight parking during this and having cars moved by 6:00 AM. So tomorrow morning, so that you're not caught in the middle of that situation. Plenty of parking on the street, streets adjacent, Milton Avenue, et cetera. We will not tow overnight on Milton Avenue. So still free to park where you can find legal spaces. Blindly, we'll be patching the old cabin site that we had occur a couple of months ago. So that will be taken care of now as well. Once the paving occurs, I believe next week at some point after work is done. Yes.
It may be worth noticing, noting that paving next week is supposed to technically scheduled for Tuesday.
Tuesday it is.
So Tuesday being an important day for people to be able to get out and move around.
And we'll continue to update on that especially.
It may change, but that's right now where we are.
We got some nice weather this week, but I think it deteriorates a little bit again over the weekend after almost 80 degrees on Halloween. But we'll see what happens. Trees are down in front of Pizza Works in Midtown. The liquor store Midtown Spirits. And I believe they're still finishing that process. Panels on the sidewalk adjacent to it are going to be replaced by DOT. They're, as I said on, online, a year late in the project, but they admit as much, but they're trying to get this thing done with the signal changeover. It's been kind of one of the longest scenarios that while they said they really enjoy and like being in Boston Spa, they're ready to be out here. And we said kind of the same, but we did bring up some signal issues that we'd like to go to that, including East High Street, the left turn question there. And also getting the signals in sync going down the hill on Route 50 itself. So we'll be talking with them further about that. Your speed signs. I got some local news notice today from the WTE and Channel 10. And so that story might be playing throughout the evening, but long story short is that people are taking notice on the idea that these signs may have a value even though they don't allow us to use, use these for tickets at this point. It gives us ability to pinpoint where we have trouble spots, when maybe get, get the lease over to the locations to do enforcement. So we're kind of on a learning curve with them still, but it's a very interesting process for us at this point. And so I'm looking forward to maybe getting some more of them. I sent a new story actually to the company we bought them from, hoping that they will continue their preferential pricing, knowing that we gave a little bit of unintended plug basically on the news today, but there is that. Not much else to report. I'll talk about Whistall Park in the old business for now. We got past treasurer's report. Let's go to the A's and reports. We'll start with Sean.
Okay. We talked about the milling. We talked about the milling and paving. Leaves hopefully will start next week. So I imagine that will go on all the way till probably Thanksgiving. And you talked about the, your speeded signs. Currently they're working with BSBPA to find Christmas tree, Whistall Park. So if you know anybody who's got the red side of the tree, let them know. And also they started working on Rosewood Church Ave crosswalk. But apparently it hit some snags, so they hadn't been able to progress that. And that's all I have.
Bruno?
The BSBPA, for those that came out on our October 20th, the car show was packed. It was the highest, I think, to my knowledge. They had 4078 cars registered and they have sent me about 5,000 people came out and, you know, spend time in their village, spent money in our village. So we appreciate that. Small Business Saturday, November 30th is coming up. They're already working on some marketing plans to encourage folks to spend time and money in our village for the holidays. And then the holiday parade, as you saw earlier, is December 6th. They're looking for a tree. And registration for people that want to be in the parade is already live. So you can just go to boston.org. And as far as our BOA steering committee, our revitalized Boston Spa, we set a date for our first meeting. It'll be November 7th at 7:00 PM at the village office. So we hope folks can come out. Thanks.
Thank you. I got one, although not using it probably. Mary, go ahead.
My group is going to be having a groundbreaking outside here on Saturday, November 16th.
Sunday, I think that is actually, you're supposed to be here. Okay, keep going. I'll figure this out.
Saturday or Sunday, we're going to change.
Yeah. Keep going.
Yeah. I'll change my subject. The Boston area seniors are going to have their annual bizarre on November. November, I don't have my glasses on. November 9th. November 9th. 9, 9:30, thank you, AM until 3:00 PM. And they're going to have baked goods, handmade crafts, 50/50 and quote raffles. And this is to benefit the seniors center. So make it if you can. Frank will give us that correct answer on the groundbreaking.
Well, it was funny because they asked me what videos are available on Saturdays are tough around that time. So Sunday was actually the aim. And they may have actually unintentionally put it back to Saturday in that. So because you're on 16 days of Saturday. And I didn't catch that back when it came through. So we'll assume it's the 16th, then I will sadly miss it if that's the case, most likely that date, but W, Mary. Ben, join.
Statement from Caitlin, the chair of the park and tree board. She says the park and tree board has been busy with some behind the scenes work. There's chats with an artist for possible new fountain designs for the St. Sussu spring in Whistall Park. And continuing to work on other facial improvements for that park. They're also beginning to think ahead of tree planting and general vegetation around the village next spring. Some members have also been out around the village doing maintenance and some younger, newer trees that were planted in the last year to, this included some light pruning, tree wrapping, where necessary, plus some weeding and losing soil around the root balls. And if anyone has any questions about how to care for your trees prior to winter, the park and tree board will be here to help. So you can reach her via the office. The next meeting is at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 16th, and will take place at the Cornell Cooperative Extension Conference. And for the committee on the arts, they have some events coming up. The sounds in winter concerts are starting November 16th at 6:00 PM at Brookside. They're having a string wind concert, flute and Celtic harp duet. It's free. It should be lovely. And then they are also doing make and take Saturdays till the 3:00 PM at Brookside Museum, November 2nd, print making cards, November 9th, alcohol ink tiles. So be sure to register ahead for those things, maybe on your Facebook page. The next meeting is November 6th at the Real McCoy. Vernon, Deb, do you have an update on the Saratoga Arts Branch? Last I saw that they were due November 7th. Or so that our board meeting on the 12th, hold on.
I actually have not heard anything from the committee regarding it.
All right, I'll email them.
Yeah.
Just to correct, I will read the email from October 18th from Andy Manion. So we will plan for a groundbreaking on Sunday, November 17th at 1:30. And she was committing, she was confirming with the committee, formal invitations emails will go out soon at that point. So it looks like it is Sunday, November 17th at, in the end, at 1:30 PM. Okay, old business, Whistall Park update. Just to give you information, I did attend the meeting at Studio A with Caitlin Morana. And we were talking with folks that are going to be looking at building our gazebo, our replacement gazebo. And the push right now is to maintain a motif of the old Aaron Spring and kind of obviously in a different way. I guess it'll be an open gazebo type of approach. So just to play off the history basically in that realm and come up with some designs. We did talk about the blowout of plans. So we can start bidding for the zone work and other aspects. And Jeff Anthony is working on that as well. We received some additional renderings. We received some additional renderings that they had done to show the general inside of the park. We're pushing those and we'll get the digital files onto the website as well. But everything looks pretty good. The gazebo pricing could run anywhere between sixty to a hundred thousand dollars in and of itself, depending on what we end up choosing. And so I asked them to try to push us toward the lower end if possible in terms of, you know, are we using stamped concrete for flooring? How will the roof exactly be handled? We have money obviously coming in from the Woods Hallow sale, but we don't want to, you know, go over that amount. We'd love to retain some of it as well in this situation. So we'll be working with Jeff and those folks with the gazebo and the stone worker about the get some of those more expensive aspects out of the way. The absolute most expensive part of this is likely the pathway, the stone work. And we'll be, like I said, going to bid very soon to see just what, how bad that damage will be ultimately financially for us to get that done. But it is also probably the most practical, feasible thing we can do in there for long term, the ground shifts and everything else to make sure we don't have cracks going left, right and center like we have in the asphalt currently. So it'll be useful to do it. It's just, it is not cheap work to do because you have to put in the right base to it. And then the stone and those stones are not cheap, even the mock stones that they often use. We were talking about grants, which we're looking still into. And also the possibility of maybe in the inner loop of the stone work, getting imprints of people's names if they want to donate for legacy stones ultimately, and getting some money in that way to help improve the park as well, or create a reserve fund for the future of that park. So we got some ideas floating around. We're just trying to get to that point. We're looking for an electrician to hire to determine. I talked to National Grid about the power needs inside the park because it is woeful in terms of the amount of power we currently carry into there. Hospital creating, carrying the triple phase that's going to be servicing this library down to there ultimately. And then designing a conduit system so that we have, when we put in the light posts, et cetera, next year, we have the ability to just go into the conduit for the wiring connections we'll need. So we don't have to unearth the park again in any way, shape or form. So a lot of moving parts with respect to this park coming in at the same time. And for those that are new to this whole thing, we're trying to take a two-year approach essentially on it where we get the stone work, some trees, the gazebo and the fountain done in the spring and any remaining aspects of it in the following spring. Because we don't want to disrupt the farmer's market and the Belmont season in June forward at that point either. So we want to make sure that we get a good chunk of it done. The park looks great for all of our summer activities. And we get to, you know, the end of next year, start any additional work, finish that in the spring 2026. My God, to say that scares me, 2026. And then be done basically with those renovations. And I think we'll be pretty proud of what we have ultimately. Any thoughts from the board? No new business, public comment on any issue, three minutes to speak. Again, raise your hand if you want to speak here or see if you got one second on the hand. I saw yours first up. Anybody that wants to speak on Zoom, please do. And please raise your hand, that is. And we'll get to you intermittently. We could try and be better about not making it last on Zoom. And so we can see if your hand is up or not. Annie?
Good evening. My name is Annie Dursen. I live at 196 Martha Avenue. The concerns over the verbo operating at 190 Martha Avenue have not been alleviated since village officials were made aware in late September. Verbo is similar to an Airbnb and stands for vacation rental by owner. This house is being used in violation of local law number seven dash one nine 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 solely as a short-term rental income property. Short-term rentals are like an invasive species, the parasite that does not contribute to the fabric of the neighborhood, slowly extinguishing the vibrancy of the community. Several articles regarding homes used solely as short-term rentals in residential communities, state issues has a negative effect on those communities by turning homes into motels, resulting in higher costs for renters and decreasing home values. These rentals operate under the radar of health and safety inspectors impacting our first responders and law enforcement, ultimately making neighborhoods less secure. They often lack alarms and sprinklers. There is often a lack of adequate emergency exits, which seems to be the case for one guest of 190 Martha Avenue. She stated that the back door was blocked and the only ingress and egress to the property was through the front door. Others have stated the property seemed to be in a state of unfinished remodeling posing safety concerns. The premise is that 190 Martha Avenue has had several short-term guests and continues to compromise the comfort and safety of the neighborhood. This is a hot button issue for many municipalities. Perhaps if 190 Martha Avenue was being used as a warehouse or other type of commercial activity, it would be more straightforward. Commercial use in a residential zone is a violation of local law number seven dash one nine nine nine. Income properties are a business exactly the same as any other moneymaking operation. Neither the owner or the verbo host reside in the building, proving it is a commercial operation. It is important that the village prioritize community members and put an end to this illegal activity at 190 Martha Avenue. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Before you go, just say I've been following this issue as your husband and I have been speaking about this, obviously, since the initial request and discussion about it. To my knowledge, here's what's happened recently. A letter was put out by the code enforcement officer regarding this property specifically. It was not picked up. The address was a bad address that was had by the village. However, the owner was at Village Hall last week and Bob Kavanaugh actually physically gave him the letter while he was in Village Hall. And so essentially the clock, any clock that exists began last week when it finally got delivered by hand to this person. And so, as you know, it's a process. The village has its rights, but so do property owners. And we have to be careful with those situations. And so if you don't see it resolved, continue to let us know. Because the other challenge of Airbnb short-term rentals or verbos in this case specifically is that we don't know who's who or what belongs there necessarily. Or we don't watch it all the time to see who's going in and out of the house. That'd be a little sketchy on our part if we were doing that necessarily to just rent houses. But you probably do know better than we do and can give us an indication of how we can document it better. Because yes, complaints matter, but ultimately it's up to us if we ever have to go to court in a matter like this to document it for that core purpose. So those are the things you can do to help us with it. From a longer point of view, finishing up, in fact, because I was asking about it today, the questionnaire about the future of short-term rentals in the village in R1s, R2s or beyond, ultimately, and trying to get some questions finalized for that. Because I would like the pulse and I think others on the board want it also on what the feelings about Airbnb short-term rentals are in the village. It's not a straightforward question. As you said, it's a hot button question. The state's getting involved, I think, trying to go for an occupancy tax. If they are allowed, I think the village should want an occupancy tax as well because it costs money to enforce these things. When you write a complaint like this, it takes away resources. Not that that's a bad thing. You have a right to that and we should be. But if we're going to have hours upon hours of code enforcement related to this, we'll need to get a more full-time code enforcement officer ultimately to handle it. And that's the challenge and the danger of these situations. So I, you know, if anybody deserves the occupancy tax, it's probably the municipality that has to actually handle it, not necessarily the state in that matter. So look for the questionnaire. When it comes out very soon, it'll be on Facebook, the website, et cetera. And, you know, send it to your friends and neighbors, make sure they see it. And help us get a pulse for what the future of short-term rentals look like in the village as we're finishing up our zoning. We'll be sharing those results with the ZAC, the Zoning Advisory Committee, and we'll have it ourselves when we review that code ultimately.
Okay, the thing that bothers me is that it's not owner occupied. There's nobody there. The only people that are there are short-term renters, transients.
Understood, but again, there's only so much we can do when it comes to identifying that on a perpetual basis.
You can get online and you can see when the place is booked.
We would happily take the information if you have.
Oh, sure. Yeah. I'll forward it to you. There are a couple other verbos in the village. I don't know if you're aware, there's one in Colonial Hills.
Well, if you want to send them their way.
I don't care about Colonial Hills. I only care about one main.
Well, come on now. They pay taxes too.
Thank you very much.
I just want to thank you for your statement. I pretty much agree with what you said.
Thank you.
And if you'd like your statement attached to the minutes, you can submit it either tonight or in the next couple of days, email it in and it will be attached to the minutes.
I can give you this one.
No, you do it for the board.
I just, I have speech, species is a tough word for me to say. So I, it's phonetically, I know it's not spelled that way.
You have any idea when a survey is coming out? I was hoping to do about a week and a half ago. Unfortunately, I've been kind of getting left, right, center stuff coming at us. But over the next few days, I'm traveling Wednesday through Monday. And so I'm planning on actually on the plane, finishing up that and getting a post when I get together on my trip on Wednesday. So for those of you that think that I don't work when I'm away, oh, no, I do. But hopefully on Wednesday we'll have that.
You've got a website.
Website and Facebook. So you'll see it all over the place if you know where to find our stuff usually. Liz, I know you want to talk, but I got to the board. Thank you. No problem. Go on, Liz.
Uh, I was planning on talking, but I'm currently finishing up a housing study in Delaware County. And short-term rentals are a big issue there because it's, you know, the Western Catskills and et cetera. What I would recommend, you may want to wait for the zoning committee, but you could within a code that says that they have to register with you. And that would be a start. So that if you're operating a short-term rental, you're required to register, to have a contact person, you know, name and address that can come. And as a start, and I perfectly agree with you on charging some sort of a tax because people are making money. And it probably should be done on a visit, not a tax. Because there might be somebody who just does Airbnb or, you know, during the track season or just for a few weeks rents out part of their home. And then there are the full-time folks. But, you know, that's just some suggestions that, you know, from Delaware County.
Thank you. See you in a minute.
Carolyn Stevenson, 45 West High Street. The Village of Boston Spa Zoning Advisory Committee will hold a meeting on Thursday, November 7th at 7:00 PM to discuss their recommendations on changes to the village zoning code. The meeting will be held at the Cornell Cooperative Extension Auditorium, 50 West High Street, Boston Spa. The public is welcome to attend. The November 7th meeting agenda will focus on zoning recommendations for mobile homes, condominiums, flood maps and flood insurance. The zoning topic for the following meeting, November 21st, will be announced at the end of the meeting. The zoning advisory committee is an advisory group appointed by the mayor and village trustees to identify updates needed for the village zoning code. It's been more than 30 years since the code has been updated and topics like this were never conceived during the last time the code was written. So it's a great opportunity for anybody in the village to attend these meetings, the first and third Thursday of each month. For the next few months, the ZAC will discuss their findings on zoning topics such as signage, accessory dwelling units, planned development districts and other hot topics. These discussions, along with the feedback we've received at the October Public Zoning Workshop, will help our rezoning consultant, Chris Kuschel from Fisher and Associates, develop the next round of edits for our draft code. The public is welcome to attend these meetings in person or through Zoom. And you can find any of the details on the village website.
Thanks, Fran. Yes, Christine. Welcome to the housing.
Christine Curniken, President, Boston Spa Business and Professional Association. First just want to say thank you, Bernadette, for mentioning the car show. A special thank you to the DPW and the Boston Spa Police for putting out some signage for us, the road closure signs, as well as putting signs on vehicles. That was super helpful. And also wanted to thank you for picking up Mayor's Choice Trophy. And also wanted to let you know, yes, a lot of new people came into the village. There were a lot of first timers, which was very gratifying. The arts grant ceremony that we were awarded, the ceremony is this Friday night, November 1st, and it's at 6:30 at 320 Broadway. That's when the presentation ceremony is. And then also just wanted to let you know the next networking breakfast for the Boston Spa EPA is going to be on Tuesday the 12th at 8:00 AM and it's going to be at the Boston Museum.
Thank you. Can you just explain what the arts grant is?
That was the, you sponsored it, sponsored it. And we had applied for the grant for $2,500 for the concerts in the park.
Oh, it's concerts in the park.
Concerts in the park. And the money came through and the awards ceremony is going to be Friday evening.
We have been to it. Thank you.
Keith Lewis, 38 East High Street, Boston Spa. So in the last board meeting, an agenda item.
Go ahead.
Keith Lewis, 38 East High Street, Boston Spa. In the last Zoom.
It's interesting he's talking because he, why not?
Hello?
Uh, hold on a second. Kate, hold on. I think I was, if you go to the sound thing on the bottom left. Yeah?
Yeah.
Look for the something, the TV name basically as the playback speaker. Read me, I can see if we hear it.
Yeah, you've got speaker, USB audio device, high-definition audio. That's NIVIA, audio ASUS utility, USB audio, USB audio, Welltech?
No.
No, USB, US, ASUS and USB.
You can never say they're doing anything for you. I did D555. B555, that's out. Pass it. Try us out, Keith.
Keith Lewis, 38 East High Street, Boston Spa.
You're welcome.
In the last board meeting, there were agenda items that were added after the public comment. You have a policy that you give the community the opportunity to speak on agenda items. But if you add an agenda item after that period, the public isn't given a chance to actually speak. And I would ask that the board in the future, should you be required to add an item that you advise the public and give them the opportunity to speak because you're robbing us of that right. The issue is a hot button one, which is Woodswool and the money that was, that was charged for Milton. The appraisal, you may remember, was done by Milton first coming in at 600 and some thousand dollars and then coming back as an amended amount of 360. And then Milton paid $435,000, of which it's been rumored that $75,000 will be spirited away to pay off on the Lumac contract. When that discussion came up, Frank disclosed to the public and the board that Carla had changed the date on the contract and put it down in front of him. And he just signed the contract that Carla had prepared. The original contract from Lumac in their cover letter states that the negotiations with Milton were ongoing, which I did contracts for a living and I can tell you that you can't change material fact in a contract without bringing it for approval by the people involved. So the fact that Carla would change the contract date and cause the village to possibly be liable for $75,000, which of course I don't think it is because the contract has no buyout. But for that to be done, I think there needs to be an answer to the public. And I think that we need to understand, the board needs to understand, she carries liability insurance for these kind of errors. Errors and omissions, liability, malpractice, whatever you want to call it. It's in there for those kind of things. The board voted on a contract and the date was changed by eighteen. Eighteen months is too long for a contract date to be changed without it being considered material. So I'd like to get some explanation on that. Thank you.
Anybody else in the house? Yes, Ray.
Yeah. Don't want to run over any little toes.
We're large with you.
Ray, on 16th November 7. First of all, I want to thank the village for, I believe it was JAG, that was doing the work up at the north end of the village on the rent for the firehouse. Living a half a block from there. And all the digging and all the pounding and everything else was totally tolerable. It was done at reasonable times. They weren't out there at 6 o'clock in the morning, you know, with their backos or anything. It was done in a very professional manner. And I wrote over it three days ago on this, when they finally moved the garbage cans they have there. And it's nice. It's so nice and I get my teeth rattled out of my face up there. So they did a great job. I'm not sure how long it has to cure for the, before the fire trucks get to go through it.
Think about a week was what I heard, but.
Okay, yeah, it should be a short period of time. And they did a great job. It looks good. I know the firemen are happy with it, so good for them. The other thing I wanted to just make mention of, over the last couple of weeks at least, there's been lots of negative things being mentioned in local posts, free the national elections that continue to drive locals apart. National candidate signs that are posted too high. But what about during the last local election, I think it was, or maybe a couple ago, when a four by eight sign was posted at the corner of Route 15 and 67? And they were called on it, so they just cut it in half and left it. But nobody said anything about this. The fact that there were piles of dirt running out to the road on a house that was being built on Hyde Boulevard for months. And nobody said anything about it, just let it go. But that wasn't the right party. Wrong kind of siding being used on a much needed renovation. And in the opinion of a small group of advisors, that was big news. Lack of transparency, not sure what that means. When these folks consider being hidden, yeah, I don't know what it is they're looking for. I would hope that in another week or so, we can all put our heads back on straight after this election, accept whatever the results are, as we won't be able to change them and understand that none of us involved with the village projects are evil in it for ourselves or making fortunes of what it is we are trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else in the house?
I have this question.
Free, only.
Yeah. When does the clock expire if it started ticking when you picked up the letter?
I'm not sure, I would have to go back to code enforcement on that. Again, it's probably 30 days, and she's right, but I.
I'm sorry, it's probably 30 days because notice to cure, it's a notice violation order to cure. And it's normally 30 days.
When did you pick it up exactly?
I, sometime last weekend. I don't know exactly.
It's final. Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay. We have other business, including unlimited support response, public comments.
Just real quick, I just want to make a clarification. Our meeting is November 7th, the same as Zach's. We are not intending to do that in the future. It's just kind of limitations on the holidays and stuff. So we'll work with you guys, make sure it's not done.
Thank you. That makes your own.
Yeah, I sent a email last Tuesday, just trying to survey the board on what our expectations are for the sale of Woods Hollow.
I think that would be executive, we're going to have an executive session. Probably would be best placed if they didn't follow up on that in executive session because technically you're talking about terms.
Well, the meeting, the contract's been signed. So it's all public now.
It's.
What?
It's fine.
It's signed, I get it, I agree with you. I agree.
Oh, okay.
Better record your background.
All right, so I'll continue, I guess.
Yeah.
So what I wrote in the email, I'd just like to hear what other people think is going to have, how this is going to work. But what I wrote was, I'd like to share my expectations for the accounting for the funds for Woods Hollow and Lumac and see how they compare with other board members. My expectation is that the village received a check for 435,000 from Milton at the closing, the total of which will go into our books. We have discussed creating a reserve fund for park improvements. I think we should do that now, you know, start that process. And that at least the majority of the money should go in there when the reserve is created. I also said, we as a board will then have to pass a motion to pay Lumac. It is my opinion that Lumac cannot be paid any amount from village funds without a motion by the board to do so. And there's been no motion for this purpose to date, whatever the amount we agreed to, which of course 75,000 is on the table at the moment. And then that amount would then come off our books. So that's, that's what I think is the proper course of events. And so I'm interested in hearing, so Frank or others, if you agree with that or if there's some different plan involved in your mind.
Follow our attorney for the legal aspects of it advises and our accountants from the non legal aspect, that's the accounting aspect of it all ultimately.
And what would that be in your mind?
I have an attorney, I just happen to have an attorney sitting in my right here, who knew?
I don't know what the question is. We have a contract and we're in the process of putting together the documents.
Right. So at one point, there was an idea was floated that somehow the 75 would not go into or leave our books, which I think would not be the proper way of doing that. So what I'm saying is, I think the proper way of doing that is for the 435 to come onto our books. And then for the 75 to, through resolution, leave our books and be paid if that's what the board chooses to do. Is, do you, does, do people, including Carla and also board members, agree that that makes sense as the way to proceed with this sale?
I'll allow you to do this one. This one with Bob writes after some stuff came out about this topic. He's concerned about what the village's posture was at that point in time. And I assured him that the sale is moving forward as normal, that there's no change, obviously, his contracts center right in there. The anticipation by Lumac is for $75,000. The contract states that Nutona Milton will have its exposure limited to that $75,000 via the payment of 360 plus 75. So essentially, at the end of the day, $75,000 is going to be taken in from Nutona Milton to the village for the express purpose of terminating a contract that's value of termination is, for settlement purposes here, $75,000. That's the way it's supposed to work. If we do not give 75,000, we'll be sued for some other, you know, measure to be taken. But that is the anticipation, and I confirmed that with Bob. And that hasn't changed from, what, how long has it been? 18 months at least, right? So I, that's all I can tell you.
Just, just for clarification purposes, the contract that was approved by.
Into the mic.
Oh, sorry. The contract that was approved by the board has an amount of 435,000, but there's no mention of any sub pigments within the language of the contract. Is that correct?
It is correct. It basically says that Milton will not have any liability relative to, to the contract with. And that will manage that. So, yeah, I mean, I'll, I continue to assert that I think 75,000 is too much to pay for not doing the work because 75 is what Lumac would have gotten if they had done the work, including all the expenses of doing the work, 200 plus trucks of help going out with lumber. And so they're actually making more money than if they had done the work net profit.
I should also warn you that he was of a litigious mind of, A, the title of the article, and B, the accusations and assertions made inside the article by quotes from trustees on this board. I would be careful at this point, of what you're saying, how you're saying it. That's just a warning.
Well, it's something where I feel like we will need to have a resolution to allocate those funds to Lumac. And at that point, we will discuss the merits of, of that resolution. How can we not do that?
Because we're obligated and court put forces to do it if we choose not to do it.
I don't know how we're obligated, I guess it's.
We did have this conversation in executive session back in April. You had requested that I go back to speak to Mr. Rice. I did go back to speak to Mr. Rice and I sent you an email with specific information from him and I didn't get any response to that. So I would suggest that it's back, look back in your email, probably around April or so this year, when the contract was finally signed, because we found that the law, state law changed. This was discussed in executive session because it is potential litigation. So if you want to keep talking about it like now, right now, I would request that it go into executive session because at this point, there is, you know, there's a potential for litigation.
Okay, I'm aware of that. I know exactly what you meant to talk about. I read it and understand it. You can talk more in executive session.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just further clarification. Isn't it our code that if we appropriate any funds from the village, that that needs to be done by resolution of the board?
No one's disagreeing with that. But no, no, no one is disagreeing with the fact that a motion will have to be made ultimately to pay Lumac. No money has been appropriated as of yet, so it's kind of a little premature.
Just asking, right? That's why I was asking for expectations, so that's helpful.
Anyone further on a topic that is going to be talked about in executive session? We'll link that for executive session at this point. Anybody else?
I just, yes, I have another thing unless someone else does.
Go ahead.
Okay. As far as I'm aware, the chair of the zoning advisory committee continues to hide documents from the public, which is against the charter of the zoning advisory committee. And this board voted on a resolution to force the disclosure of a premature document in terms of it's not ready for public consumption as its work product for that committee. And it did not pass, and therefore that supersedes anything else at this point. Actually, that motion was just to put it on the website. And so that was voted down to put it on the website. The, the charter states that, that ZAC records shall be made available to the village anytime, including production to the public upon request. That was not voted on, that issue of making documents available upon request. The only issue that was voted on was posting on the website. And so right now, the chair of the board of the ZAC is in violation of the charter. And I feel that that is improper. What is, what is your rationale for hiding documents from the public, Frank?
Oh my God. Can I get a motion to adjourn and about to be audited at the meeting?
I'm not, I'm not done with the conversation. I'm not.
Actually, can I get a motion to go, I revoked that. Can I get a motion to go to executive session for personal matter discussion? Trustee Fundings.
I did not indicate.
Trustee Bryce Bush, discussion, all in favor.
Say, once again, you are interrupting.
Motion carries three to two. You'll return from executive session.
Against the rules of procedure, against, against the rules of procedure, you are interrupting a trustee in the middle of a conversation, and that is against the rules.
Oh, Paul. Tomorrow I'll get you a contract.
And I mean, I was like.
Maybe it should have been first place, it's code action for this.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. I'm just trying to write it down. So.
Yeah, so to me, it's essentially just checking. Some, you need to have your, some four dollars. At the end.
So.
It should be just like a little name, charge. Right? Only, only a couple.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we're back in session at 9:48 PM. We will take action here and I will allow you to phrase the motion if you could with respect to Sarah Berger Esquire.
Yeah, motion to retain Sarah Berger Esquire to conduct an investigation on her harassment complaint.
At the same rate as previous.
The same rate as her prior engagement.
Can I get that motion please? Trustee Fandanza. Second, by trustee Raymond, discussion. All favor. Actually, technically, we would give the opportunity, however, in this situation. Nobody's seen raising their hand, so nobody's in our audience either. All in favor? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that vouchers be audited and be adjourned at 9:49 PM? Trustee Fandanza. Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We will see everybody in November. Remember to go vote on next Tuesday or early voting.